Meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors to order. And we have a couple special guests with us to kick off the meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague from District Five, Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me go ahead and just do a quick introduction and then I'd like to say a few words afterwards, if that's okay. We have a couple of guests that are here from or with the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence. We have Huhana Mendoza, who is the co-CEO of the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence, and LaTisha Bowers, who is a board member and treasurer of the board. And so if they would step up and lead us in the invocation and pledge as well.
I ask, as I offer this prayer, if we could all please bow our heads. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Please fill us with your grace, Lord God, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you. Father, please enable us to move forward with a shared purpose and to always act in accordance with what is best for the service of our community and for the service of humanity. May our efforts be blessed with insight and guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us the strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I'm going to now lead us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Mendoza and Ms. Bowers. Thank you for being here. As we get ready to kick off the month of October as our Domestic Violence Awareness Month here in Maricopa County, as well as Phoenix and the state is, are doing their own monthly campaign. These ladies work year-round, and they work year-round to make sure that if you are in a tough situation, that they're there to help. They're there year-round to offer assistance to many of the survivors throughout our community. They're there to spread the word, they're there to service, and you couldn't be more pleased with the work the Coalition has done. I have the honors of being really introduced. I've kind of met most of the Coalition folks when I was at the Capitol, but I really got to know many of them when I got here to the county board. Christina Arzarga, yeah, I lost Chris, but Christine is, oh, there she is. Christine, my chief, has been on the board for six years, going on her seventh year. She's the vice chair. So she's been actively involved in many of the activities and particularly as a board member, just doing boardsmanship stuff, but really organizing their big gala. And I've had the honors of being at their gala every year since being here at the board. And it is, it is the who-hoo of Phoenix comes together for this gala, and it is truly remarkable event. They do a great job, and a lot of folks come together, as well as survivors that are doing their testimonials. And you have just, just a lot of organizations coming together to show their support. So they do a wonderful job, and I just want to thank them for being here and being part of our meeting today. And I think we're going to have a proclamation later on.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Supervisor Gallardo, for your words and your leadership on this issue for many years. We all, all of us in Maricopa County appreciate that. And thanks so much to our guests for joining us today. Thanks for being a part of our meeting and for all that you do in the, in the community. It truly is such important work. With that, I'll turn to the clerk. If, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers?
Here.
Supervisor Chukri?
Here.
Supervisor Hickman?
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Here.
Chairman Gates?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Well, as we always do at our formal meetings of the board, we're excited to have Jose Santiago with us. Now, usually, he just has one pet, but I see that he's got two. Double the trouble today.
Double the trouble, yes. I think most people in this room are old enough to remember these names. This is Laverne and Shirley.
Yes.
And so they are about four months old. They're a terrier pair that came into the shelter as strays. And so they are currently up for adoption at the West Shelter at 27th Avenue in Durango. And they are quite the pair. If you can't tell, they're very attached to one another, and they are very shy for puppies. But I think a little of that has to do with the fact that they were just spayed yesterday. So they're a little under the weather for the moment. I also wanted to let you all know that we had a very successful adoption on Saturday. The Bissell Pet Foundation stepped forward and heard about our overcrowding situation. And we, on Saturday alone, did 237 adoptions from our two facilities. So we're very pleased that the community stepped forward like they did and saved a lot of lives and helped to create some space and some breathing room at the shelter. So Laverne and Shirley, again, are available for adoption. So if anybody here is interested, we can...
Excellent. Cute, very cute puppies, and just the reminder to whoever is their, their new owner that not to put beer in their dog dishes, right? Even though they are Laverne and Shirley, it's just, just, just water. Just checking to make sure everyone was paying attention out there. Jose, thanks so much. What's that?
Wasn't it milk and Pepsi? Wasn't that...
Milk and Pepsi was...
Yeah, was there a drink?
Yeah, yeah, they just worked in a brewery, yeah, exactly. All right. Well, thanks so much, Jose. Appreciate it and appreciate all that you do over there. Bless you. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda today at all?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. All right. Well, thanks so much. Well, we heard a little bit about this earlier, and this is our Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamation. Very proud to be acting on this item today, and would like to call upon our clerk, if you would please, Fran, to read this proclamation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2019. Whereas domestic violence is an epidemic affecting Americans in all communities regardless of age, gender, economic status, race, religion, or educational background; and whereas domestic violence is a pattern where one partner uses their power to control the other, partner through physical, sexual, emotional, or financial abuse; and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports that nearly one in four women and one in 10 men have experienced domestic violence in their lifetime; and whereas last year, 85 people were killed in domestic violence-related homicides in Arizona, 60% of which occurred in Maricopa County, according to the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence; and whereas the Arizona Department of Health Services reports that in Arizona, children witness a domestic violence incident every 44 minutes; and whereas enhanced education, prevention, and intervention efforts will increase public awareness and confront the abuse of power and control in interpersonal relationships, now therefore be it resolved that the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages all citizens of Arizona to support the efforts of organizations providing education, outreach, and support to victims of domestic violence, and calls upon citizens to dedicate themselves to ending all forms of violence and the abuse of power in relationships.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So the proclamation has been read. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, so moved on the proclamation.
Thank you very much for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Chukri. Again, just echo all the comments that Supervisor Gallardo made earlier about this item. And this is, you know, one of those items where you're especially proud to be a part of this body and to, and to make a strong statement and support those out in the community who are doing so much on this issue. So again, a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick notes real quickly. October, of course, as we indicated, was, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Beginning in October, our administration building would be the bright purple color, as well as, I think, the Capitol and I think the city of Phoenix. Come downtown on a, on a evening, any evening, and you'll see a shade of purple throughout the downtown area, which is good. But it's a reminder that we do have family and friends and coworkers that are in tough situations, and many of them are scared, they're ashamed, they don't know where to go, where to turn, and it's important for us to continue to send that message that they're not alone, that there's folks here to help. There's organizations like the Coalition and a few others that are there to really step in and provide emergency services. And that's what October's all about. On October 24th is the National Wear Purple Day, where we're asking all our employees to wear purple. So that's always an exciting time. And then, of course, our office also has our monthly, our Friday coffees up on the plaza by the elevators. Our hopes is as, as our employees are coming in to, to work, we're going to offer a cup of coffee and a, and a, and some type of a pastry, and they can speak to some of our, our guests that are going to be there from different providers. And again, our hopes is they'll grab a card, put it in their pocket, and when they feel comfortable, if they need to make a call, they can make a call. And so we'll be doing that on, I know Chris wrote the dates here, I should know this, but I don't. October 4th and October 18th is going to be our two coffees. We're, right in the morning, as employees come in, we'll be offering a free cup of coffee and some information around domestic violence. We ask everyone to come out and join us. But please don't forget, October 24th, it's all wear purple.
Excellent. Thanks so much. And I have my purple tie at home. I will definitely have that with me in October.
I was encouraging them to, to come up with another campaign, come up with another tie, and, and we can...
That's a nice tie, yeah. Excellent. All right. Well, thanks so much. Now we'll move into the statutory hearings under the clerk of the board. We have number six liquor license applications. A is a new license for Polly's Little Bite of Italy. B is the acquisition of control for Fuel Co. And C through H, special events, event license for Wickenburg Historical Preservation Society, Adelante Foundation, Southwest Wildlife Conservation Center, Northwest Valley Connect, and Risen Savior Lutheran Church. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here to comment on items 6A through H?
None, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, then the board will now consider items 6A through H.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval, items 6A through H.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second? Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. More statutory hearings under clerk of the board. Number seven is impact statement for the proposed Fraser Fields Irrigation Water Delivery District. And eight is an impact statement for the proposed Wild Horse Ranch Irrigation Water Delivery District. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on item seven or eight?
Mr. Chairman, if I might ask that we would take these separately. We do have some speaker slips on item number seven, if you'd like to take it first.
Great. And I believe that is in District Two.
Thank you.
So we do have one speaker here opposed and three in favor. Supervisor Chukri, would you like me to go ahead and have these folks come on up and speak now? Excellent. First in favor, we have Norris Phelps. If you could come on down to the lectern.
Good morning. Pleased to be here. We appreciate the opportunity that this would provide us in establishing a irrigation water delivery district for, since I was a little boy, there had been irrigation in this area. I have a special interest because of ancestors who started the areas of dairying, but our next speaker will say most of what I would otherwise say, so I won't repeat what has been said. We should have put that in order properly. We do appreciate that this will provide us an opportunity for us to have a little bigger base of those that contribute for the welfare of the benefits that they receive. It is an older system, and we are needing to make some repairs. And through the bylaws and the open transparency that this provides, we are grateful for what it represents. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Next, we have, let me make sure I've got this right. Do we want Alice Skinner next or Peter Eller?
Gary Shuler.
What's that?
Is there a Mr. Shuler?
Oh, okay. Gary Shuler, if you'd like to come down, thank you.
Thanks for hearing us. I just want to say a few words in regards to being in favor of the irrigation district. Our neighborhood's one of six historical districts in Mesa. It's the first post-World War II development. We have been maintaining our 70-year-old irrigation system, and residents have been paying annual fees on a volunteer basis. So it's been kind of here and there. We are wanting a more formal process for collecting funds and making sure we can keep up with the maintenance and repair of our older system. Everyone benefit, everyone in our neighborhood benefits from the mature landscaping, which contributes to the neighborhood and the historical integrity of the historic neighborhood that we live in. We feel that without this, we're going to have a harder time maintaining and repairing our systems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down to speak. Next, Alice Skinner. Good morning.
Yeah, I'm short. We have what we call Friends of Fraser Fields, where we meet probably four times a year with different improvements that we'd like to do to our, to our irrigation system, to our neighborhood. Neighbors help neighbors. We're a very tight community. And the system is, well, it's like a circulation system. If it gets clogged up somewhere, the water ain't going to go someplace else. And we have a wonderful man who has been doing this by himself for years. I will mention his name because I think he deserves it. His name is Doug Davis, and he's like a groundhog down there, just, you know, working away. And he knows where to get the parts and all that, but he's getting up in age, and he was, he's been doing it generously, out of love for the historic district. And we really could use this to help maintain our system because it's getting very weak, and some of them go under the sidewalk and have to, and the city's going to have to work with this to get the water to the other side. And it costs a lot of money. So if we could get this passed, we would be so elated. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And then I do have a speaker slip here for Mr. Eller in support, but says, doesn't want to speak. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thanks so much for being here. We also have in opposition Keith Christian, who would like to speak. So, Mr. Christian, if you can please join us.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here and speak my opinion this morning. I believe in being fair. I believe in being equitable in all my dealings, work, church, friends, and family. I try to instill this in my, my kids and my family. And when I got the paperwork for the proposed district in the mail, I asked myself, how is this fair? I contacted SRP Irrigation. They informed me that there are 115 properties within the proposed district that currently receive irrigation. But as I looked at the map, there were 141 properties that would be in the district that would be required to pay this additional tax. And I cannot understand how it would be considered fair to force these property owners, who some, to my understanding, aren't even connected to the irrigation system. Unless they put forth their own funds to connect to the system, they have no way of even receiving irrigation to their property. The paperwork that was sent to my house says that everyone will contribute and everyone will profit by the formation of the water district. When I read this, in my opinion, I asked myself, how does the formation of the water district profit those that would be forced to pay the tax and maintain a system that they do not even use? In my opinion, that statement was incorrect, whether intentional or unintentional, which leads me to question a lot of the other things I read in the, read in the paperwork. Are they correct? Or are they misleading? Some might say to me, Keith, don't you like getting flood irrigation? And the answer is yes. I, I think it is an awesome service that we get. It's one of the reasons that my wife and I moved into the house that, that we live But, you know, I would never want someone to be forced to do something, especially pay a tax, no matter how small, so that I could enjoy such a luxury as flood irrigation. It's not something that I need to survive. I would never want to support anything that would, in my opinion, be unjust to anyone else. And it is because of this that I cannot support the creation of the Fraser Fields Irrigation Water District. And to add, the Friends of, I'm not technically in the historic district. I live in the next street over. And it was a surprise to me to hear about the creation of this district. I have never been invited to Friends of Fraser Fields meeting, where they were going to discuss these items. In fact, it took over two years for anyone to even come to my house to inform me that they even collect a fund to try to maintain the system. Otherwise, I would have been gladly putting forth my, my portion of that because I do like the system. I'm just opposed to forcing people who want nothing to do with it to pay for it so that I and others who do will be able to continue to have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I congratulate and applaud the, the folks here today for your civility and, and also for your recognizing this is a process and being brief in your comments and deferring others to talk. That's a, very seldom do we see that here. So I thank all of you. As someone who was born and raised in Mesa, I certainly understand this, and as a kid happened to turn on the valves at three in the morning, I certainly appreciate that. But today, and to Mr. Christian, I hear you loudly. Unfortunately, I didn't, I wasn't aware of your opposition until just now. However, we can, we can speak offline. What today is about, though, is simply setting a hearing to put things in motion to discuss and dialogue. And I will tell you that it seems, Madam Clerk, that this has been a year of irrigation districts, for whatever reason. We haven't had this many in my tenure here on the board at one time. But if there is someone who is unfortunately, or mistakenly, a part of this, that will receive no benefit, we can certainly address that to make sure those who are in this district are appropriate and can have it. There was another part of Mesa just about a month ago, where four or five neighbors had no access to the water yet. They were wrongfully included. We can do that through the clerk's office. So what I would like to do today is, is move this forward, Mr. Chairman, with a motion to approve, but also letting everyone here, including the proponents, that we need to work together. I would encourage you to work together with those who are opposed to it, and make sure that everyone has the right understanding of exactly what this is before it comes back to this body. And if you would like to work with the clerk's office, she's well-versed, probably the best versed in this subject, and she can make sure that if someone is accidentally or mistakenly put into this district without being able to utilize it, that they are properly removed.
Thank you. Supervisor Chukri, we have a motion to approve this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. I did want to note for the record as well, we have four letters in support, but these individuals didn't have the opportunity to make it down. 315 North Fraser Drive, 253 North Fraser Drive, 60 North Fraser Drive, and 224 North Fraser Drive as well. So I wanted to make sure we had those for the record. Motion and a second. Any discussion at all? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now on number eight, Madam Clerk, this is another irrigation water delivery district. Do you have any speaker slips on this item?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any speaker slips on this item, but we do have one letter in favor of formation from James Morris and Deborah Morris, who live in the district.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. So with having considered that then, we will place number, item number eight on the table. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval, item number eight.
All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Hickman, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Continuing under statutory hearings under transportation, we have 9A through T. These are road files as listed in the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone present to speak on these items?
None, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, then the board will consider items 9A through T.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Under the county attorney, we have number 10, which is a budget adjustment for Maryvale Behavioral Health Facility. And under the sheriff, we have number 11, which is appropriation adjustments for Queen Creek Law Enforcement Service. The board will now consider items 10 and 11.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 10 and 11, and the whole facility out in, in Maryvale, item 10, is just coming along, looking good. It looks like all the pieces are coming together. So I do move, I move, make a motion to move 10 and 11.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Under Superior, that motion passes. Under Superior Court, we have number 12, which is budget adjustment for the Maryvale Behavioral Health Facility. The board will now... will now consider item 12.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 12.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under county administration, we have number 13, which is the authorized volunteer time policy. And under finance, we have 14, which is to accept tribal gaming funds from the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation. And 15 is funds transfers and warrants. The board will now consider items 13 through 15.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes. Under human resources, we have 16, amend the premium pay rates. 17, market ranges. 18 revisions to employee leave policy. Under human services, we have 19 and 20, which are IGAs with Scottsdale Unified and the Macy Unified School Districts for meal service. 21 is grant funds and letter of agreement from Workforce Solutions Borderplex, Inc. 22 through 24, that's amending IGAs with the Town of Gilbert, City of Glendale, and the Housing Authority of Maricopa County. And 25 is to amend a lease agreement with Housing for Hope, Inc. The board will now consider items 16 through 25.
Move to approve items 16 through 25, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Under the medical examiner, we have 26, which is a donation from the Pinal County Office of Medical Examiner. 27 is the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grants and Appropriation Adjustment. Under public health, we have 28, which is purchase order for IGA with the Arizona Department of Health Services. 29 and 30 to amend a contract and IGA with the Arizona Department of Health Services. 31 is in addition to fleet. 32 and 33 are amend agreements with helping families in need. The board will now consider items 26 through 33.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 26 through 33.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes. Under transportation, we have 34 through 35, that's change in traffic controls. 36 is annexation by the City of Peoria. 37 is Verizon Wireless in-building agreement. 38 is easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. Under the Board of Supervisors, we have 39, which is a resignation from the Maricopa County Cooperative Extension Advisory Board. 40 is reappointment to the Transportation Advisory Board. 41, reappointment to the Citizens Audit Advisory Committee. And 42 is a resignation of Cecil Ash, North Mesa Justice of the Peace. The board will now consider items 34 through 42.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. We do have a motion and a second on these items. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Under setting of hearings, we have planning and development, 43. These are planning and zoning cases. For transportation, we have 44, which is patent easement abandonment. And 45 through 48, which are road files as listed in the agenda. The board will now consider items 43 through 48.
Move to approve items 43 through 48, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You snuck in there before Supervisor Chukri. You want to take the second on that one?
I'll second before Gallardo does.
Excellent. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Under the consent agenda, we have 49 through 59, cancellation of elections and appointments. 60 is a report of the active special taxing districts. 61 are donations. 62, duplicate warrants. 63 is a RICO funds quarterly report. 64, tax abatements. 65 and 66, property reclassification appeals cases, approvals and denials. 67, civil penalty appeals. 68, secured and unsecured tax rule corrections. 69, precinct committeement. The board will now consider items 49 through 69.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. On the county attorney, I am going to declare potential conflict and turn that over to our vice chairman.
Is that only on A1?
That is on A1.
Two and three.
And three. Yeah. Yeah. All the county attorney items.
Okay.
Thank you.
And also on A4.
Okay.
Do you want me to just do all four of them?
Well, then I'll just go ahead if there's also a conflict on A4. Ms. Clerk, is it okay just to take them all at once, A1 through A4?
It is, sir.
Okay. Looking for a motion on items A1 through A4.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items A1, A2, A3, and A4.
I hear a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Didn't hear any? Motion's approved. We'll welcome the chairman back to the dais.
Did anyone go through A4?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chairman, for handling that. Next, under transportation, we have the settlement in the Sam Yaldo et al. case. The board will consider item A5.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we're gonna recess as the Board of Supervisors, and we're gonna convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. F1 is a resolution for the White Tanks Flood Retarding Structure, number three. F2 is in-building license agreement with Verizon Wireless. And F3 is easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. The board will now consider items F1 through F3.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now, we're gonna adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Stadium District Board of Directors. And we have S1, which is quarterly reports from AZ PB Limited Partnership. Board will now consider item S1.
Mr. Chairman, I approve. Item S1.
Thank you for that motion, Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a second?
Second with a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think we're just accepting the reports correctly.
Correct.
Approving the dispersments personally.
Correct. That's right. We have a motion and a second, unless we have any further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. Now, we're gonna adjourn as the Stadium District Board of Directors and convene as the Housing Authority of Maricopa County. First, we have H1, which is to amend an IGA with the Maricopa County Human Services Department. H2, which is local initiatives, support corporation loan agreement. And H3, which is a first bank refinance for Rose Terrace Development Partnership. The board will now consider items H1 through H3.
Motion to approve items H1 through H3, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. So now, we will adjourn as the Housing Authority of Maricopa County and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors for Maricopa County. And this is the time for item 70, which is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips for public comment?
I'm not sure of their topic. I think these are on animal control and those are the eighteen.
Okay. Excellent. We do have several slips here. So everyone who would like to have the opportunity to speak, we will give you that opportunity as a reminder. And for those who haven't been here before, we do have two minutes for public comment. And also, under state law, the Board of Supervisors is prohibited from responding to your comments. Doesn't mean that we're ignoring them at all. And we may choose to direct the county manager to follow up on the comments if appropriate, but we're just not able to interact with you on your comments today. So for, and I do apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. But our first individual for public comment today is Katie Gerlach. If you'd like to come on down and join us at the lectern, and again, two minutes. Morning.
I'm here today to speak about the three volunteers who were recently terminated by MCACC. I am aware that you do not know these three individuals, but I have had the pleasure of personally working alongside of each of them. And I'd like to briefly speak about each of them in hopes that you can better understand the loss of their termination. I will start with Lorena Batter. Lorena has devoted thousands of hours to MCACC. She has assisted with various areas of the shelter and is well-respected. Lorena has worked with hundreds, likely thousands of dogs, but I vividly remember one particular dog named Sushi. Sushi was, to be bluntly honest, a difficult dog. Few volunteers were capable of taking her out, including myself, so she would just sit in the back of her kennel, slumped over with her head hanging lows for days on end. In no time, Lorena noticed Sushi was suffering and got her out of her kennel and continued to work with her throughout her time at the shelter. I could tell you dozens more stories just like this about Lorena. I have never known another person who was so gifted, skilled, and compassionate with handling dogs. County has been so fortunate that Lorena chose to volunteer her talents at MCACC. It's not something you can replace. Jordan Batter is the creator of several social media pages with more than 20,000 followers, which she uses to network the shelter dogs. On average, her posts reach tons of thousands, sometimes hundreds of thousands of people across Arizona and the United States. Last year, Jordan had posted a story about a dog named Wally, who was surrendered to the shelter along with all of his possessions. The story quickly went viral and had millions of shares and gained the attention of national news organizations. But most importantly, the posts resulted in Wally's adoption. Jordan's pages have resulted in hundreds of people who would have never, otherwise never have stepped foot in the shelter and have ended in adoptions for dogs, who are now in loving homes. Jordan is very well-known in the public and rescue community for her work with the various shelter dogs, but particularly the senior dogs. In fact, her work with the senior dogs resulted in a significant donation to MCACC. Jordan has spearheaded and perfected networking, which has saved the lives of countless shelter dogs. Erica Edmark is the newest of the three volunteers, but she has quickly proved her dedication to the shelter dogs. Every weekend, Erica would arrive at the shelter well before openings.
Time's up.
Okay. Yeah. It is impossible to condense all the good these three volunteers have done into just two minutes. So to end, I ask that you please consider the hundreds of dogs that have been and will continue to be adversely affected by the decision to terminate these three. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today. Next is Mary Ann Zohn. Thanks for joining us today.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Mary Ann. I'm a foster myself for Arfinage Rescue, and I've worked with the gals from the county. And I found them to be compassionate, knowledgeable, have a passion for the dogs, and advocates. And it's through them that so many dogs have been adopted and saved from the euthanasia list. And I'm here to support them in getting reinstated from their positions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ailee Hannigan?
Good morning. Bring back the Baters and Erica, too. You cannot retaliate against them for doing what is best for these dogs. Brandy C. So maybe you should thank the volunteers and welcome them back after apologizing for making the mistake of letting them go. Leslie M. This is all thanks to the volunteers. They are responsible for getting these donations. Gwen S. Thank you, Erica, Jordan, and Lorena. The county will never admit it, but it is because of your courage to speak out that these dogs are finally getting some relief from this heat. Linda K. These are the public comments of your constituents, constituents, their voices. But you would not know that because within minutes of posting, these comments were deleted from social media by the management of MCACC. You are allowing and downright supporting the censoring of the public by an administration under your charge. In August, during his report to you, MCACC's Public Information Officer thanked you for supporting him during this whole ordeal. You replied that you had his back. As repugnant as I personally found the exchange, I did my best to let it go. But your words nagged at me because I really don't think you understand what having someone's back really means. Having someone's back means sitting with them on the floor of a closet while they're in tears from the way they were treated by the management of MCACC. It means literally putting your body in danger to help a fellow volunteers cornered by an aggressive dog because they were assessed wrongly by behavior staff. It means walking 28,000 steps in one day because volunteers needed help during an adoption event due to lack of staff. It means comforting a volunteer who was sobbing uncontrollably because a dog that they had been working with for months was walked back into a cold room and left in a trash bag. It means literally sacrificing your time, energy, blood, sweat, and tears to be a voice for the voiceless. Having someone's back does not mean sitting in a cushy chair in a cool office and unilaterally and unapologetically stripping your constituents of their constitutionally protected rights.
Thank you for joining us. Next, Erica Edmark.
Nice to see everyone again. After the last meeting, you are now aware of the backstory and the context of the fired shelter volunteers and the subsequent civil rights violations. In addition to reiterating how beneficial our reinstatement would be for the county and the dogs, I would like to use this time to address the toxic and tyrannical leadership at MCACC. Please ask yourselves if a good leader would terminate three unpaid volunteers who provided an average of 70 hours of labor to the shelter each week for personal reasons. Assuming a modest wage of $15 an hour, management essentially gave away over $54,000 per year in free labor. You know what we are accused of. Even though those accusations are false, are they worth that monetary loss? Or is there something possibly, is there possibly something bigger at play here? What are they trying to hide that they would fire volunteers with no warning and no due process for a couple of benign comments in a private chat? A former shelter employee who could not be here today told me of a conversation that she had with Mary Martin regarding the lack of kennel staff and the high turnover rate. Mary told her that when she ran the shelter in Santa Fe, she used illegal labor because it was cheaper and that she wished she could do that here in Arizona. When asked why the board doesn't designate more money for the obvious staffing needs of the shelter, Mary said that she didn't want to ask for monetary help because that would invite more oversight from the board. I will repeat that because I think that it's important. Your shelter director does not want to request monetary help because it will bring attention to her and how she is running the shelter. Please ask yourselves, between that conversation, firing people who speak up, intimidating current volunteers, Facebook comment censoring, the public relations blitz to cover up the temperature issues and the volunteer termination, and who knows what else, what is she trying to hide? What is she trying to keep you from finding? An employee told me that she stated on multiple occasions, when asked about certain questionable decisions and actions, her response was, "I can do whatever I want." Aren't you concerned about whatever includes? I know I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time today. Kelly Wolf?
Thanks for joining us.
I'm very disappointed and upset and frustrated that, again, we are all having to stand up here. I would like to remind you that we have to be the voices for these dogs. We would all much rather be sitting, helping the hundreds that are in the shelter right now, getting less than adequate attention, care, due to the overcrowding and underfunding that is being ignored. After the last meeting, you heard every single one of us bring up the numerous issues going on at the shelter, the dreadful actions of the management, and also the wrong firing of the volunteers at animal control. None of these requests were responded to. Nothing was brought to attention. Our requests were completely ignored. Please, let's not forget that we elect you to hear these issues. We look, we elect you to look into these issues and fix the wrongs that occur. Not to tell employees of the shelters in supervisors' meetings that you support them 100% when they apologize for us bringing the truth to your attention. We are being left with no other choice but then to believe you do not care what is happening to these dogs. If we continue to be ignored, we will remember this on Election Day. And most importantly, so will the thousands of other supporters that are fighting for these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Elizabeth Aliski. Thank you very much. Next is Elizabeth Aliski.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today.
First-time attendee. Board Supervisors, I'm Elizabeth. Oops, sorry. I'm short as well. Age 45, dog owner my entire life, gratitude of my parents and grandparents, but more importantly, a former volunteer with county since 2013. My topic or petition to you all this morning is around communication. Communication is simply the act of transferring information from one place, person, to another. There's a myriad of modes and media for said communications, such as verbal distance, like this, nonverbal, such as this, written, such as this, or a little face-to-face time. Now, simply because communication is launched does not mean it was effective in the delivery, right? I'm certain you've all experienced miscommunication in both your personal and work lives, where some are more memorable than others. I know we like to reminisce about the ones that, hey, say maybe provided a chuckle and then probably suppressed the ones that caused us a little bit of pain. For me, and so many, as I have derived from the thrash that you've seen here before, as well as today, there appears to be some fundamental communication issues specific to the release criteria of an MCCAC volunteer. Now, I'm not ignorant to the fact that actions have consequences, whether they're positive or negative. So what I'm requesting here today of all of you is the respect and being granted a more effective communication regarding the reasons or justifications for the recent release, or as the term "firing" has been used, of the said referenced MCACC volunteers. So I greatly appreciate your time here this morning and your future thoughts into the response of this minimal effort request of understanding the justification around their removal. Thank you.
Thank you for communicating with us today. We appreciate it. All right. Next is Carrie Rousier. Good morning.
I'm a volunteer at MCACC. I'm here to speak on behalf of the three terminated volunteers, as well as the concerns I have for the county shelter. Did any of you serve in the military? My dad served for Vietnam, and my grandpa served for World War II. I'm highly discouraged and concerned that Maricopa County is violating the rights of the citizens of the United States that my family fought voluntarily for. My question to you, if there is an investigation going on, why hasn't any of the other volunteers in the private chat been questioned? Why haven't the three volunteers that have been fired been questioned? It's coming across to me and many others that it appears that there is a corrupt, one-sided investigation here at county. Hundreds of calls and emails on behalf of these volunteers have been ignored. Why is that? I've lived in this county for 22 years. I moved here from the Midwest. I have an architecture degree, and I am a general contractor here in the valley. Those EVAP coolers at that facility, at both facilities, are old. The facility's architecture design is a nightmare. The kennels are, the kennel buildings are set up as, excuse me, animal warehousing that offer continual disease transmission. And the dogs are going euthanized for unresolved colds. Why is it one of the largest counties in the nation so far behind on creative thinking? I am embarrassed that this county is so stagnant and 20 years behind the innovation and process procedures in animal welfare. Pima County is much smaller, and their facility and management is cutting-edge and current. Actually, many volunteers across the nation, many shelters across the nation are further ahead than this county. I ask that you reinstate these volunteers and also look into why haven't we received these EVAP coolers that we were told that were going to be installed this month. Thank you for your time and for saying the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you for joining us. Appreciate it. Next is Jordan Bader. Good morning.
My name is Jordan Bader. I attended the last meeting. I'm one of the volunteers that was fired at MCACC the beginning of August. There have been hundreds of emails sent to every one of you, and not one of us has received a reply. You guys state the mission of your position is to provide regional leadership and fiscally responsible, necessary public services. You were elected by us, the public, and we have turned to you as officials for answers and to speak concerns for so many things, and not one of you guys have replied to us. This situation of firing three committed volunteers got so big, multiple news channels were contacted. The Arizona Republic did an article on us, and even the county Facebook page posted an update. But we still could not get one word from you guys, our elected officials. We obviously can't get a reply in an email or a phone call, so I wanted to know while I'm here in front of you and personally, why I haven't been given the time of day after all I've done for the animals that you guys say you care for and that you guys are in charge of and make all their decisions, why I haven't been given the least bit of respect shown to me or anyone that has come to you with concerns. I would hope our elected officials have the respect for volunteers that have spent over thousands of hours putting our blood, sweat, tears into the shelter, getting bit by dogs, seeing dogs we love be euthanized, seeing management disrespect us over and over again, seeing dogs suffer in 100-degree kennels, and we do this on our own free time. We stood by MCACC through all of this. Do you guys really not care what we go through and what we have to say? I know it's hard to understand the value of each volunteer. Let me tell you, I have given MCACC an estimated 3,900 hours since I started volunteering in 2014. Since the nationally-recognized hourly worth of an animal shelter worker is $15, that means I have given $58,500 worth of services to the animals and the people, your constituents of Maricopa County. I believe I deserve a meeting scheduled on this matter and to be put on the Board of Supervisors' agenda. This is not okay that you've chosen to ignore us day after day, email after email, concern after concern. Like I said at the last meeting, I will not stop fighting until I am reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us today. Next is Wendellin Helmstead.
Good morning, gentlemen. It's nice to see you, but I really hate the circumstances. I hate the circumstances that we are back here again, and nothing has been done to give any sort of a fair shake to these three volunteers who have given so much of their blood, sweat, and tears. I'll be honest with you, I don't have the heart to go in there and face dogs that are going to be killed. I don't know how you guys can sit on this board and look at those two beautiful puppies that were brought here, look them in the eye and be like, oh, my gosh, they're so cute. Let's make Laverne and Shirley jokes. But then you don't care about all the other dogs that are in the shelter that are getting killed. More dogs are killed when there are less volunteers. Those volunteers gave so many hours, I can't even count, to help those dogs, and I think the least they deserve is your respect and answers. And I'm a constituent, too, and I vote, and I want your answers. I want those volunteers reinstated, or at least given a fair shake. They weren't given a fair shake, and it's not right. It's really not. I do thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker on this item, Leslie Fletcher Ayers. And I understand you came down from up north somewhere, so thanks for coming to join us today.
I did. I want to make sure my time isn't sorry. Unfortunately, both of the gas stations were closed, and I have a kid in school, and I'm disabled, so I'm doing my best to be here on time. I'm a service member, former service member, disabled service member. So I apologize for my tardiness. It's not my nature.
Not necessary.
I wanted to say good morning. My name is Leslie Fletcher Ayers, and I wanted to give you a quick background on myself. I grew up in Iowa, where I got animal, had animals my entire childhood. I joined the military, and I've traveled all over the world. I have volunteered in humane societies in five different states. I'm here today as an experienced volunteer to tell you that this is an archaic system. By choosing to not reinstate these volunteers, it's going to cost you approximately 100 hours a week, $400 hours a month, and $4,800 hours a year, these three volunteers. Some of these women put in more hours than paid staff does. I have seen firsthand how much they do, especially for the elisted and the senior dogs. They work tirelessly for these animals that would otherwise be euthanized. I recently adopted my dog, Maury, who was to be humanely euthanized about a month ago. Her crime was having valley fever. When she came in, she was 35 pounds, and with only being fed once a day, she had already gained four pounds, but they were going to euthanize her. I took her immediately to Dr. Gilson at Pet Urgent Care, and he was mortified that that dog would have been euthanized. Every day, they update a list of these dogs that are going to be euthanized. All three of these women's rights have been violated, and because someone can't be the bigger person and apologize and reinstate, it is only the animals that are suffering. I hope this doesn't become a system in our nation, because that means when each of us grow old, or when we get a little cough, it will be our time to be euthanized. Think about that. We have to figure out how to gain funding to open another shelter and start modeling ourselves as a no-kill shelter. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, thanks for being here. I appreciate it. Our next speaker is Annalise Ortiz. Thank you for joining us.
I'd like to allow these three women to go before me, if that's okay.
Absolutely. So let's have Julian Gonzalez, please. So I have a total of four slips left here, so if there's someone else who wishes to speak, we should get that filled out.
That's fine.
She's not speaking.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name's Julian Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of my 17-year-old daughter, Brianna Gonzalez, who has been in LBJ for five months with mental illness. Her experience there has been more than a traumatic, traumatic one, one or two days or more on a four-point bed, and having to earn the right for clothing because she is having mental health issues. She has been kept from her family for four months, no contact, just Brianna and four walls. What kind of justice is that? She has had some traumatic experience. She is a multiple young rape victim who deserves a chance in life. This is one the county attorney who decided to press charges on her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vangelina Gloria?
Yeah. So I'm here today to ask, when you take into consideration of getting another county attorney, that you take into consideration that these bills that are signed, the FPIP, people don't even know about it, and you are already a contract with Southwest Behavioral Connections, all other services. We need to decriminalize mental health in our facilities. My daughter has been detained for eight months with pending charges underneath the Rule 11. She has been stripped completely of her clothing, been tied to a table four-pointed with just a bra and a diaper because she's not being allowed to use the restroom unless allowed by them. I'm being told it's MCSO, which is not the case. It is Correctional Health Services, but when you watch the video, it's clearly MSS, Maricopa County, that's handling her. You guys have a lot of funding. You get paid $105 a day that my daughter's been detained for eight months. You guys have not properly or adequately facilitated her. Even if she went to the Arizona State Hospital, you would still be paying $950 a day to house her, which is ridiculous. You guys are not giving her the proper treatment. And just for my daughter sitting there for eight months with a video that has reached social media through New Times, and it's going to keep going, and I'm not going to stop until you guys listen. You guys are a Board of Supervisors. You guys have so much jurisdiction in our community, and you're not using it. The power that you guys have, you guys shouldn't have that much power. You guys aren't using it for the right things, and it's an embarrassment. I mean, the way you guys treat us as a family to support her, and the way you're treating my daughter, she spent her birthday, it was Friday, in jail because you guys have a messed-up system. She's on pending charges. One charge is carrying three felonies for a 19-year-old who is autistic and functions at a low level. And you guys are not taking any of that into consideration with her autism, bipolar, schizophrenia, borderline functioning, and I just think that you guys should really take a look at what you guys are doing to her and to the community.
Thank you very much for joining us today. Next is Maria Castro.
Chairman Gates, members of the board, my name is Maria Castro. I am a community organizer with Puente Human Rights Movement. I've been working with the families of Brianna Gonzalez and Valentina Gloria, two young women, two teenagers with mental illnesses. You have had, and you're almost done, with Graves versus Maricopa County, and this lawsuit that this county has seen over the last four decades shows how this county has mistreated people with mental illnesses, because the county attorneys in the past have decided to prosecute these people instead of providing support for them. This is a four-decade-long lawsuit that this county has faced. It is fiscally irresponsible to appoint a new county attorney who is going to continue to criminalize these people. So we urge you to appoint a county attorney who will commit to fairly investigating claims of prosecutorial misconduct, properly disciplining prosecutors when necessary, and protecting the due process rights of people charged with crimes. We urge you to appoint a county attorney who will be radically transparent with the public, be responsive to public requests, to work directly with those most impacted by the criminal legal system when important decisions are being made. We urge you to appoint a county attorney who will work to reduce the prison population by ending prosecutions that disproportionately impact low-income people, people of color, and people in need of medical care, and take seriously their duty to seek justice for those who have been harmed or lost their lives to police violence. We urge you to appoint a county attorney who will end the office's harmful and regressive lobbying against criminal legal reform. We urge you to appoint a county attorney who will pledge not to run for election in 2020, and we urge you to appoint, to follow a process that is transparent and inclusive and ensures the involvement of people directly affected by the criminal legal system. I have copies for each of you, and these are, this is a letter that is signed by over a dozen community organizations, as well as elected officials.
Your time is up.
And we hope to hear a response in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. I hope that you all will read this demand letter that we have put together, again, along with 12 advocacy organizations and four state lawmakers. I want to expand a little bit. Again, my name's Annalise Ortiz. I'm representing the ACLU of Arizona, and I want to expand on our demand that you appoint a county attorney who will pledge to not run for election in 2020. We think voters should be allowed to fairly decide who the next county attorney will be, and that status as an incumbent will give the interim county attorney an unfair advantage in a contentious race when the voters of Maricopa County will have not had a say in their appointment. So we ask you to protect the democratic process and ensure that this is a fair election. And I also want to talk a little bit about the Citizens Committee that is going to help you with this appointment process. We commend you for putting together a Citizens Committee, but we are disappointed that that committee does not fully and fairly represent people that are most impacted by the legal system, especially people like Brianna and Valentina's mom. They are, this is their lived experience, and that committee could have extreme value by hearing from people whose loved ones are incarcerated or people who have been incarcerated themselves. And the ACLU of Arizona, Puente, and Lucha, we all have networks of people with lived experience with the justice system, and we ask that perhaps they could come present to this Citizens Committee, or that you could urge the chairman to read this letter and to, I mean Chairman Skelly, to read this letter and to learn a little bit more from the people who are directly impacted. We think it's crucial. And I just want to thank you for your time in this process, and we are here to be a resource for you all, and we are here to be a resource for the Citizens Committee as well, so it can truly be a Citizens Committee that is not represented, representative of the elite or political powers, but representative of the people of Maricopa County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, my apologies. I'm sorry. This is the time, this is the time that we allow my colleagues up here to speak on issues and things that they're working on, and so let's start with Supervisor Gallardo.
I have a lot to say here now.
Sorry, sorry.
My mind is moving here. No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, folks, for those that came to speak with us during opening comments. Words are being taken in into consideration. Just real quick, thank you to Erica Flores. Where's Erica? I know she may be back there somewhere, but she's helping a lot with the domestic violence campaign here in Maricopa County. I was gonna, I had a note to thank her at the beginning, but I forgot. So anyway, thank you, Erica Flores. And then next week, or the 25th, maybe a couple weeks from now, maybe, a few days from now, we're having our D-Back Jams, the annual D-Back Jams, working with the Diamondbacks and many of our school districts, Cartwright Elementary School District, Levine, I think Murphy School District, and some of the others, we're going to work with in order to allow some of our kids who can see the baseball stadium every day, they see it from the, you know, they see it all the time, and they never have an opportunity to go in, but we're giving them an opportunity to go in. 2,000 kids we're going to be hosting. 2,000 kids, we're going to be hosting, starting off at the Phoenix Suns Arena, and we're going to march over to the stadium where these kids could get on the field, see themselves on a, on a Jumbotron. Every kid gets a T-shirt and gets a hot dog and a drink, and gets to enjoy a Diamondback game. There is a criteria, though. They have to perform some type of community service. They have to give back, either help their teacher, or their family, or their church, or do something, and then write an essay about it. Out of those essays, we're going to pick five essays, and those five students are going to be rewarded on the field, and one gets to throw out the first pitch, so that's always exciting. But that's coming up. We normally have it in May or April, but because of the MLB schedule, we were forced to move it to September. Apparently, the New York Yankees and the Boston Red Sox are big draws, and, and those were the, the games we had in, back in May and April, and unfortunately, we had to move it. So September 25th, big D-Back Jam. This has started way before me, so this isn't my idea. This is something that was created many, many moons ago. We've changed it a little, but we, we've added students as well, but it's a tremendous program, and we have a great time, and thank you to the Diamondbacks for their participation, and all the school districts, too. School districts are great. Also, just had a meeting with, with Phoenix Union. As you know, I serve on the Phoenix Union High School Governing Board. We are working with, with Phoenix Union to have what we are considering the first convening of gay and lesbian students to come together. We're going to have it in April of 2020. It'll be the first time that we bring students from all over the valley together under one roof and talk about issues. Many of these kids face harassment. They get picked on. They get, they get bullied on social media. They see derogatory comments all the time. They're, they, they walk around in the halls of their schools, struggling with who they are and who they love. We're trying to help them out. We're trying to provide them services. We're trying to work with them and how we can make the environment at their, not only on their campus, but community, community-wide, very welcoming. So it should be interesting, fun. Many of these students will be able to tell their story and be able to mingle and network with other students that may face similar situations, but we're, we're excited to be able to bring all these gay and lesbian students together under one roof, and they can tell their stories. And I think that's, that's, that's exciting. Other than that, we are doing, we have a couple of other events coming. I think I'll talk about those next board meeting, but we have a couple of other community events. This is, this is the year. Weather's cooling off, and, you know, we got the Avondale, the Twin Cities, it's not even called Twin Cities anymore, it's just something, but, but we have, all the community activities are coming along now that the weather's cooling off, so it's exciting. Fun times.
Great. Thanks so much. Ms. Rich? All right. Supervisor Sellers?
Okay. I'll briefly cover some of the activities that I've had in the last couple of weeks, but when I finish these, I want to do a service award for my Chief of Staff. So I attended East Valley Partnership Board Meeting. We had a very informative presentation on the significance of the Palo Verde nuclear plant as a clean energy source for our region. At the Greater Phoenix International, Greater Phoenix Economic Council, International Leadership Council, we heard some encouraging information about our international outreach efforts. A third of our locates last year were international companies, so that's significant change in the last 10 years. I attended an informational session by Chandler Unified School District on their bond election scheduled for this year. I think almost all the East Valley schools have bond, bond or override elections coming up, so important to get that information. Our East Valley Partnership Economic Development Committee had a great update on economic activities in the city of Mesa by their Economic Development Director. And yesterday, our East Valley Partnership Government Relations Committee started discussing critical items for our 2020 agenda. Okay, moving on, if I could have my chief come forward. Rick Bohan was hired in 1999 at Maricopa County Department of Transportation as an intergovernmental liaison. In 2003, he transferred to the county manager's office as legislative liaison, and in 2007 became the government relations liaison. In 2009, Rick assumed the Deputy Director of Government Relations and Communications role, and was appointed to Director, Government Relations position in 2010. In February of this year, he was assigned to me as my chief on a trial basis to see if we could work together, and the good news is that we, we have done well together. So in May of this year, he was, he became my Chief of Staff. So let me go down front.
Uh-oh. He's going to get a medal.
Mr. Chairman, we always wondered what Rick did. We see him in the halls all the time. We weren't sure exactly what he did, and it's good to know.
Thank you for your service to the county. All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Sellers? Vice Chairman Hickman?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just bring up one, one thing, because it was mentioned earlier in the meeting a little bit about, I want to personally thank all of the Citizens Committee that we assigned for the search, or to basically start vetting out potential candidates for the county attorney's office. It could be a very thankless job, but I know that this crew thanks them for the amount of time, the amount of hours they are going to spend coming up with their kind of selections of who we should possibly appoint. And I think they were selected because they are part of the community, and they will be hearing from the community, and they know that, because we do. So I wanted to just take my time to thank them for doing a little bit of public service in a, in an extremely important role for this board.
Well said. Thank you very much. Supervisor Chukri?
Nothing other than, Mr. Chairman, I have two service awards I'd like to give to my Chief of Staff and Deputy Chief of Staff at a forthcoming meeting.
All right. We'll get that on the agenda now. Thank you very much for that. Supervisor Chukri, just want to thank everybody who's been at community meetings recently that we've put on out in District 3. We had a great county coffee where I walked through the work that we're doing on elections, how the Board of Supervisors is stepping up alongside the recorder. Want to thank everybody for their participation in great questions. Thank all the citizens and the staff members who came out to New River for the last area plan community meeting. Really went well, and excited to have that come before, planning and zoning, and finally to this board later this year. And also, I was in Desert Hills yesterday for my lunchtime meeting, you know, open forum that we do almost every month, and great, great participation there as well. And I am going to do a little point of personal privilege here. I have a couple of sweet 16 birthdays in my house coming up, and so first of all, want to recognize our daughter from here, who's been with us for, with my wife and I for her whole life. She'll be turning 16 next week, and then about 10 days later, we have a new daughter who's joined us from Uganda, and she will be turning 16 as well. So a lot of sweet 16s in the Gates household, and we're very excited about that. So happy birthday to both of you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.